Twenty twenty-two Board of Douglas County Commissioners, five thirty business meeting. We want to welcome those of you who are with us in the old courthouse and as well as folks joining virtually on Zoom. I'm just going to share a bit about how we conduct our meetings to start us off. Each action item that you see on the agenda will offer an opportunity for public comments specific to that topic. We ask that you wait until that agenda item that you're here for has come up for discussion. Near the start of our meeting, before discussing regular business items, we will invite folks to offer general public comment, which I have a few folks signed up for. And I'll go through those first and then we'll move to online commenters. If you are watching online and you wish to make general public comment, please plan to use the raise your hand function and staff will move you over and unmute you. All public comments should be directed to the county commission. They are limited to three minutes. We will ask that you please state your name and residence in Douglas County for the meeting minutes. And all public comments should be directed to the county commission. And we've reserved the right to mute or remove any speaker who is vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. If visual aids are used during the meeting by any presenters, you will need a laptop, tablet, or phone screen to see those. If you cannot see them, they are also available on our website. You can download the materials that way. And then a recording of this meeting will be available on our website and YouTube page after we adjourn. And with that for this evening, we have a proclamation to start us off. I'm going to look out and see who might be here for building safety month. Is Tina online?
It's online, so we'll get her moved over.
Great. Tina, if you're with us, then I'm going to read the proclamation for you and invite you to share any comments and information that you'd like to afterwards. Whereas our county is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians and dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role that our communities largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Safety for All Building Codes in Action, the theme for Building Safety Month twenty twenty-two, encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all our benefit. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to us all by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Kansas, hereby proclaim that the month of May twenty twenty-two as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, we encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Tina, are you with us?
Yeah.
Hi there.
Yes.
Welcome to share any comments.
Okay.
If you'd like to.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. And I couldn't have said it better. To add to that, you know, this is forty-two years running that we've celebrated Building Safety Month with ICC. And as the proclamation indicates, it is globally. And I am very proud to represent Douglas County as your building code official to present this. The proclamations, when they're done, will be forwarded to the ICC website. And I'm also representing Douglas County on Friday to for a signing with the governor. So it is with thirty-five years in this industry. It is very near and dear to my heart. And the beauty of this endeavor of education is that it really gets down to a grassroots education, you know, anything from backyard barbecue safety to recognizing hazards around the home. It doesn't have to be technical in nature. So I want to offer my sincere gratitude for your support. So thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Really appreciate you being here and appreciate you raising awareness about this. I know you've, as you mentioned, you've been in the industry for a long time and have a lot of experience that we are grateful to have in Douglas County and appreciate the public awareness that I know you're gonna, that you work on kind of throughout your daily job, but that you'll focus on in this next month. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Have good evening.
You too.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Commissioner Kelly, do you wish to pull anything for conversation? Okay, I'm going to look to the public and see if anybody that's here in the courthouse with us would like to pull anything from our consent agenda for further discussion. Okay, seeing no hands, double check online. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda on items one through seven.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to general public comments. I've got three folks signed up. I'll call on them first, double check if anybody else is here that would like to provide in-person public comment. It looks like our microphone over here is already on. And just a reminder that you'll have three minutes. And please direct your comments to the county commission. First, we have Kirby.
Good afternoon. My name is Kirby Evers and I'm from South Lawrence. And I'm here on behalf of the Lawrence Democratic Socialists of America. We would kindly request the issue of renters' right to counsel be considered. Now, I've watched enough of these county commission meetings to know that housing is one of the top priorities of this board. As well as I think it goes without saying, a lot of people in our community are at risk of falling into homelessness with rising rent prices, with be the word, inflation and such. The right to counsel for renters is vital to homeless prevention. When it comes to people that are at the edge of poverty, it's important that they have any resource to have a fair shake of the dice when it comes to being evicted. And I think this measure would be important. I know that plenty of the people here are in favor of this motion. It's just a matter of getting the ball rolling. Had play written, but to be honest, I think the important thing is just get this moving forward, knowing that we do have the resources to do this. It's just a matter of doing, just planning it out in a timely manner before the budget gets locked down. And really, I guess that's all I have to say personally. Thank you.
Clavin?
Thank you. My name is Clavin Snow. I've been a Douglas County resident for twenty-four years. I am a current homeowner and former renter, and I've lived in Lawrence since nineteen ninety-eight. I've had experience with good, honest, and competent landlords who've been fair and kept their properties maintained. I've also had experience with slum lords who weren't either honest about the fees they charged nor competent to maintain the properties. And I could bemoan the problems of the past, the landlord that required fees on top of rent to fix maintenance problems that predated my tenancy, the landlord that damaged my credit because he put the utilities of a triplex in my name using my social security number without my knowledge or consent. But I'm not here to discuss my past. I'm here to address the problems of the current moment. There are scores of landlords operating in Lawrence. And while this is a college town with a college season, there are also many permanent residents, couples, widows, and families who stay throughout the year and deserve to be able to manage their housing with honesty, integrity, and dignity. Renters often face eviction unfairly. They could be threatened with eviction because they unwittingly move into a property infested with bedbugs and roaches, ending up in a situation that they are then forced to pay to rectify when they are already low income and trying to do the best for their dependents. They could be threatened with eviction because they can't pay the rent, which is increasing with hyperinflation. If someone is paying a recommended third of their income for housing and the rent suddenly triples, their entire income is consumed by shelter, which is only one of several human needs, nearly all of which cost money. In times of economic desperation, all people will do what they must in order to survive and to care for their children. This is not a good situation for the safety or stability of families in our community. Often landlords can pay for an attorney, sue for the eviction, show up in court and force out the tenant because people facing eviction can't afford to hire a private attorney. They already broke the glass for any emergency fund they may have had when it came to paying rent or hiring an exterminator for the health of their children. They don't have the money for a consultation with an attorney, let alone court appearance. Lawrence's public defender system is already broken. But while they do end up having to pay for it, someone accused of a criminal offense can have an attorney assigned to them. In the case of an eviction, these people aren't usually accused of a criminal offense. The eviction case isn't a criminal trial, so they are not guaranteed the same right to legal counsel that suspected criminals are. It seems that rectitude would require us to afford the same rights for tenants that we confirm for suspected criminals. And while we don't, we could. The Tenants' Right to Counsel Initiative has the goal of providing legal counsel to those who are facing no criminal charge yet risk being forced from their homes. This would be provided at no cost to them and allow them a more equitable playing field to negotiate. Even if their attorney can't outright halt the eviction, they may be able to negotiate for the tenant or family some time to arrange for new housing or a payment plan that is satisfactory for both parties so the family can stay housed. Renters Together has unified collectively to submit that their voices be heard, their rights be established, and their dignity be upheld. As a Lawrence community member seeking stability for my community and safety for all against the abuses of predatory landlords, I stand with them and extend my solidarity to the cause, adding my voice to their appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
I know how big into names you are, Shannon. So that's Dr. Justin Spease. Please give me the respect that that I deserve. I have a PhD in lifespan and human development and a master's in marriage and family therapy, both from Kansas State University. And I have a bachelor's in addiction counseling from Washburn. I taught as an assistant professor at Washburn in the Family and Human Services Department for six years. I taught numerous developmental classes at K-State as a teaching assistant while working on my master's and PhD. I was a licensed marriage and family therapist and licensed master addiction counselor here in Kansas through the BSRB, and I have worked as both in the past. I was a board member of the BSRB Addiction Counseling Subcommittee and served as a secretary for the SDA Care Center Board here in Lawrence, where prior to that I worked as a child therapist for children who had been sexually abused. I served in the United States Navy Submarine Service from two thousand, two thousand nine on the Fast Tech submarine USS Springfield out of Groton, Connecticut. When I got out of the Navy in two thousand nine, I was an E-six, first-class petty officer. I'm now running for the District One Douglas County Commissioner's seat currently held by Patrick Kelly. I wanted to bait you so bad, man. Please run. Do it, man. Run. You never answered me, man. You never respond, never respond to my emails, never do it in person. But man, if we were on some kind of debate stage, man, oh, it'd be so fun, man. So fun seeing you squirm. Last Wednesday, I was kicked out of this county commissioners meeting because my sign contained words that Douglas, Democrat Sheriff Gay Ambroster and the Democrat Douglas County Commissioners don't like. Why don't they like my words specifically? As mentioned, I'm running as their political opposition for the District One Douglas County Commissioner's seat right now. These commissioners and sheriff Gay Ambrosters silenced their political opponent, me, because they are afraid that I could win. And if I did win, well, they just wouldn't like that. It's unthinkable to them. It's repulsive. I love it. The other day, while going through security at the courthouse here in town, as luck would have it, in walks Commissioner Reed. And so as I ask her, wouldn't it be funny if I was your colleague beginning next year? I'll hold you accountable. She immediately pissed herself, walked out of the room and down the hallway as quickly as possible. I think it would be fun, man. I'm not sure what her problem is with it. So my question is, why in the hell would I want Sheriff Gay Ambroster or the Douglas County Commissioners or anyone else who are my political opponents essentially running my campaign on my behalf by dictating to me what I can and cannot say in order to get more votes than them? The fact they say I can't say certain things they don't like leads me to believe that perhaps I'm on to something otherwise. Why would they want to censor me? Attempting to do that just makes me want to say the words even more. If they ain't afraid of me, if I'm just a minor threat, just a crazy bastard on the street corner that no one takes seriously, that the whole town laughs at, then why censor me? Just let me say what I need to say and let the people decide for themselves if they want to vote for me or not. Why would I want or allow them to make decisions about my campaign? They are the opposition. You think they have my best interests in mind? Or do you think it's much more likely that they have their own best interests in mind when making these unconstitutional decisions about what words I can string together in a sentence that comes out of my mouth? Hell, no, they don't have my best interests at heart. So again, why in the hell would I allow them to dictate my campaign messaging set and set the rules for the campaign season? Again, my name is Dr. Justin Spease. I'm running for Douglas County Commissioner in District One. And my campaign slogan is fuck these liberal motherfuckers.
Is there anybody else here that would like to make public comment? Please come forward.
Sure. My name is Dr. Melinda Levon, but you can call me Melinda. Yep. Oh, sorry. Dr. Levon, but I prefer Melinda. I live at Fifth and Ohio in Precinct One, County District One. And I'm here to discuss my concern about the right to counsel. The biggest update I have for you is that I've confirmed this week that KHD is preparing a CLE, Continuing Legal Education Course for all the attorneys in Douglas County, anybody that's interested in taking some eviction cases. And they will be able to do that in August. And I think that's going to give us a lot of really effective counsel options. I think a lot of attorneys, not just defense attorneys, are gonna end up taking some of those, like they do DV divorce cases and that kind of stuff. But again, it's the access piece that we're missing. I feel like the commission has done a lot of work on this. And I'm so grateful for people like Gabby and Yariel. And so, you know, so many people are working on housing issues from all these different angles, day in and day out, doing that, that really hard work. But you know, the timeline that you've laid out and the efforts that everybody's working on, we might have funding for this next spring. But I'm asking you to look at our budget, look at the money we have coming in, and can you get us a bridge? Can you get us a little seed funding or some kind of bridge to get through the wave of evictions that I think we're going to end up having this fall and winter? I don't know how closely you've watched some of the state changes when it comes to hedge funds and real estate investment companies. But in the last year and a half, we've had a lot of rental properties here in Lawrence purchased by not just out-of-state companies, but with foreign investment dollars. And Douglas County families are going to have to fight these people in court. And we need your help. These are really powerful people. Globalization of our rental units is happening, and they have really powerful attorneys. And I'm seeing things that aren't always legal. Like last year, we saw letters taped to the door that were made to look like they came from the sheriff, but they didn't. And sending new people to the property at eight o'clock at night to bang on the door and tell people to get out. So, you know, really illegal type of activity. And there's no way for us to fight it without moving forward on some right to counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that'd like to, please come forward?
Hi there. I'm George Kevin Elliott. Born and raised in Lawrence, Lawrence High, class of eighty-three. I wasn't intending to speak tonight, so forgive me for not having all my notes in front of me and prepared. I wanted to talk about the tenants' rights to counsel for eviction as well. We've heard some information tonight about how important it is, how people who are disenfranchised will lose out when it comes to finding corporate corporations and lawyers. One of the things that hasn't been talked a whole lot about, but it's very important to me. And again, I apologize for not having these statistics in my hand. But communities that do have tenants' right to counsel have much lower eviction rates. They have lower homeless rates. We're all very familiar with the high cost of providing community services to people who are homeless. So in the long run, this would save the county money. So not only is it the right thing to do, and I believe government's job is to protect the most vulnerable, but it's also the economic thing to do because it saves money in the long run. And I hope, I hope those are factored into the considerations for supporting a program like this. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Once again, anybody else here with us that would like to provide public comment? Okay, seeing none. Thank you all for joining us in person. Anybody online? Nope. Okay, that will go ahead and close public comment and move on to our regular agenda, which is a legislative update from little government relations.
Commissioner Reed, if it's okay, I just have a question for staff. Maybe we had a number of public comments and there was the question about a bridge request in our budget. Sarah, would that, if that was something that we wanted to look, that would come from staff, wouldn't it? Or, I mean, go ahead.
More than likely, since it's a new service, it would come from outside the organization. So I guess a formal letter request, dollar amount process. And if there's consultation with staff on how that would work, like a little bit of information, but normally we get some sort of written proposal. But staff knows that they bring it to me in budget. So I would say if it was an outside request and sort of something for one-time funding until something was put together, a written, some sort of written document would be helpful for us to react to and have staff prepare a response to.
And we've had those before. Is that correct? I mean, we just did one.
On some occasions.
Rare, but we've had those before. And for those folks who've wanted to talk to us about right to count, I would really refer you to the October thirteenth work session we had. And maybe you've all seen that, but you can go back and look at it on the Douglas County YouTube page. And it sort of talks about some of the things that are happening in that space. And just want to make sure you're available, you have that resource as well. Thank you.
I was like, I saw you a moment ago. There you are. Forward, thanks, Stuart.
Good evening. I appreciate the rarity of a light agenda. So I'll be quick and be happy to answer questions. Stuart Little with Little Government Relations in Topeka. And I'm here to provide a general legislative update of issues of interest that we've been following and reporting on for the county during the legislative session. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And if I can't answer them, if you stump me, I'll circle back around with some responses. I wanted to thank, first of all, Sarah and Jill for their continued engagement with us and responsiveness. And when we ask questions, we get an answer back. And when they reach out to us, I hope we're equally responsive and getting things back. I would note that as of Monday of this week, the end of the legislative session, the wrap-up session began. They will likely be done tomorrow or Friday. They're moving very quickly, dealing with a variety of issues. One of the things that makes it, is making it happen quickly, two things, I'll circle on. One is that last week, the legislature learned that they had a $3.1 billion ending balance. So two years ago in April, revenue estimate said we were going to be $700 million in the hole. And we were potentially, but then we had passed the tax bill at that point and have been moving forward. But we do have vastly more revenue than anticipated. So that means that the last couple of days in the budget, which is still meeting, I think they went back in to meet at five-thirty here this evening, are putting together the final budget. So they're spending some dollars in some places. And there've been a variety of tax cuts that were passed. And on my way over here, actually, the legislature, the Senate approved the elimination of the sales tax on food through like three phases, down to four percent on January first of next year, two percent the following January, and then in twenty twenty-four, it would be zero. So that'll completely eliminate the sales tax on food, has no impact on local sales tax rates, but that is phased out. There's a lot of consternation because people, we have the revenue to do that. It costs basically $500 million. We have the revenue to do that right now. Kick in July first, that was the governor's recommendation. But that's what passed the Senate, it likely will run and pass in the House tomorrow. So that should be resolved. So we're in the process of wrapping up. So I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights in terms of what's, where we are in the process and some of the issues that we've been watching. I mentioned sales tax on food. We still have sports wagering and medical marijuana are still alive. Literally had three or four conference committees on medical marijuana. They will take that up again at eight-thirty in the morning. I suspect there will be a bill that will run tomorrow or Friday and likely pass. So that's, that's coming in the works. The one kind of hiccup that we have in moving forward, obviously, one of these big issues been, that has been resolved this afternoon, has been education funding. They had negotiations the last two or three days, and they've come to an agreement on the way over here. I was listening. And they, and so they're going to wrap that up tomorrow as well. The one thing that tripped us up was, and obvious interest here, is the congressional redistricting map, which on Monday, when the legislature came into town, the first thing that greeted them was the district court in Wyandotte County throwing out the redistricting map that they made for the congressional districts, referencing intrusions into communities of interest, and specifically in Wyandotte County, but I think also referencing Douglas County and the changes that were made. So what that means is that the Attorney General has appealed that decision to the State Supreme Court. Within thirty days of Monday, they have to make a decision. If the court says you have to come back and try a new map, the legislature can't adjourn and be done until that's done, or they have to have a special session. So what they're going to do is they're going to wrap up their work this week as if they're done, but they're not going to be completely finished. And they're going to probably schedule two or three days at the end of May and come back and deal with if they have to do, if the map's okay, they won't come back and they'll be done. They'll come back for their last official day, June first, I think it's scheduled. But so they've built that in. What that also means is when you know the legislature, they may pick up some other things they want to do when they come back. But that map issue is out there and they've built some time in. I would note that the budget, I'll get some of the policy issues. At this point, the budget that was passed at the end of the regular session was approved. Governor had some vetoes. But for us in particular, the funding, the next year of funding for the crisis center in there is in there. And I know it's at least at our, kind of the level we've had for the last, last couple of years. And I think where there may be some increase in there, in part because there was an increase in the state general fund portion that's being used for crisis centers, which frees up revenue in the lottery fund, which funds our crisis center. And at the same time, one of the impacts of COVID and not having casinos open was video lottery went up. And so revenue's up in that pool of revenue as well. So that's in there. There is significant funding in there for the first group of community mental health centers. So Burt Nash, in our case, it'll be transitioning to getting CCBH certification. And so the ones that are, that are going online here now on May first, I believe it is, that first group of folks, there's $17 million, which is forty percent. So it's about, about $45 million, forty, forty-five million that's going to go in to establish new rates. And then, of course, we'd be in the next round of that, excuse me, a year from now. So the legislature has, after creating that, going through that process, yes, they're sticking the funds in. I have no idea if people are happy with the rates they're going to get, but that's, that's what's happening going in there. So I know both of those things are in there as well. So I'll mention a couple of policy issues. There's a, there's a, in my, the written report that I provided has a lengthy description of a couple of bills. The tax bill that was passed, it has an impact on local property tax. So this is one thing to keep in mind. There will be some changes. We've gone through imposing a tax lid, what, six years ago, seven years ago, repealing the tax lid and coming up with the revenue neutral rates. So budget clerks, everybody loses their mind trying to figure out how to go through this transition and the new process because every taxing entity is involved. Well, they've made more changes this year. So I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights. Each of these things were parts of different bills, and I think we had some testimony on some of these. But essentially, the twenty thousand homestead property tax exemption that folks get on the, on the twenty mills that's levied, has been doubled to $40,000. And then there's a formulaic system that gradually over the next few years could increase that up to 65,000. So that'll be a property tax break for homeowners. What it does is it creates a hole in the state budget to fill, to make up for that lost revenue to fund schools, because that's where the twenty mills go. So part of what the education conference committee today added in $45 million. It's easy to do these things when you've got a $3 billion cash balance. So they're making a lot of these changes right now. So that's going in. There is one change that from a county's perspective is an interesting deal. Stimulated out of some action in Atchison County, there was some legislation that was going to say, and that is, it is a part of this bill now that has passed and been approved by the governor, that a county does not have to follow the distribution formula for sales taxes anymore. And so ongoing when there is a sales tax or when it's renewed. And so ongoing, when there is a, a sales tax or when it's renewed, that there will be an option to, to say for the county, when it goes, when it's noticed and goes for vote, that the sale, the revenue will not be distributed to other taxing entities. Or you can come up, so it's, that, that will be within your toolbox going forward. The, as if the procedure for doing a revenue neutral rate was not confusing enough, now you have to have an actual roll call vote, you can't just by consensus, you have to do that. It also created a very elaborate appeal process for any interested party who doesn't like how the procedure went for calculating the revenue neutral rate to go to the Board of Tax Appeal, which anybody that follows that, they've got a huge backlog. So that will complicate matters there as well. One of the things of interest, the 20 mills that you levy for schools will no longer count against the revenue neutral rate. So if assessed evaluation drives up to 20 mills and it can be attributed to the 20 mills, that doesn't trigger a requirement. So that'll be something that folks will have to figure out how to finesse. That, I don't want to go too long, let me just hit a couple of other issues. There is one bill that did not get passed yet, but literally the Tax Conference Committee is meeting as we speak, Mallory's over there and sitting in that. But one of the provisions in there is that, something that we started talking about last year and it's still there and it's, it's labeled, it's kind of called the COVID-19 Retail Storefront Property Tax Relief Bill, that when it initially began was those folks who felt like they, because of restrictions, had lost revenue in their business would be able, and if the initial bills were, the county would have to make people whole through property tax relief and those kinds of things. The long and short of it is through this whole process, what they're discussing today is that, is that there was $50 million put into the budget bill that was passed and approved. Again, money makes it easy to solve problems. And so instead of, they're still going to have this business relief fund, but the local, local units of government will have no responsibility to do that. That's part of what that fund was set up for. And so folks who feel like that's done, I think up to $5,000 will come out of that fund and, and any local entity is not on the line for that. So that, that's going on, the sales tax on food, I think I've already covered that. And that, let's see, a couple of other things, I would note, the, one of the issues has to do with, there were a number of preemption bills, the legislature seemed, trying to step in and some things we fought off. We don't win a lot of battles in the legislature, but there was one that said you couldn't, the local unit couldn't have any vacant property registration or fee requirements because some folks are starting to do that. So you can begin to sort out between abandoned property and what's just transitional and those kind of things. And there were folks in some communities that started doing that and folks wanted to stop that, that went down. There was another bill that prevented, prevented any governmental entity from contracting with a vendor to which a firearms company objected to. And so we went through that whole process, had the hearings on that, that bill didn't go anywhere. One of them, we did testify on was the, the plastic bag ban, the one that preempts any governmental entity from, from having any restrictions or regulations on plastic bags and other containers. That bill passed the legislature and it was vetoed by the governor. It is, it, it needs to pass, so to veto, you've got to have extra, you've got to have two-thirds votes and that override of veto, two-thirds votes. In the House, it's 10 votes short of overriding the governor. And in the Senate, it's one vote short and it has to be overridden by both chambers. There has been no effort at this point, and we're down to like the last couple of days to override the veto. They've overridden other ones, but not that one. The, there are two, at least two bills out there that restrain and restrict county public health officers and you all as a governing body to, to make, take positions and make regulations or respond to emergency orders. They are both still sitting in Health Conference Committee, they have not met. And it's now, is it Wednesday? Yes, Wednesday. And so they have not met yet, so time is running short for that. And I'm not sure we're going to get anything out of it, but those are going to be things that would further restrict both KDHE's ability to do anything but advise. And the same thing would exist at the, at the county public health officer and you all as the public health body to do that. But it also would prohibit any restriction, any restrictions on any religious entity based on public health issues. It would prohibit you from doing a mask mandate, those kinds of things. But both of those bills are sitting in, in committee and nothing going on there. Couple of things of local interest, I would note the 988 hotline, which has been ongoing saga in terms of trying to find a funding stream. As of today, there's still not a funding stream for that. And I'm not sure where the tables turn next, because there, everybody's aware of it. Everybody's conscious of, I think, trying to get something resolved. But this is a, this is a, a conflict of a variety of different people that don't normally communicate between telecoms and social services and, and all those kinds of things. So we don't have any resolution to that yet. So that's one of the things that we were watching. The sheriff came and testified on a competency evaluation restoration bill that was passed. There's another bill that would be, probably be of interest to the, to the Behavioral Health Group and to the Courts Group. There's a specialty court legislation that passed, it was around for a couple of years, that expands the ability for folks to, to establish utilized specialty courts and puts together an advisory committee so that folks can be figuring about how to maximize revenue and resources and those kind of things going forward. So a couple of those issues. I would note probably here, close to the end, a couple of election bills have been passed and we've watched a number of them. And, and one of them was just passed yesterday. There's one that's still sitting, but let me just kind of, the one that's still, that passed the Senate before we left, but they have not come back to deal with yet in the House and they still may, if we're here for a couple of days. It was going to prohibit or limit remote ballot boxes and make the deadline for submission of votes on the night of the election when the polls close. The bill that already passed the Senate, which I think is important, that's the more conservative, but it's already passed the Senate, has one remote box. And then for every 30,000 people in the jurisdiction, you can have another ballot. So you could, if you're, if you're at 110,000 people, you can have, you know, whatever. You can do the math, you figure how many remote boxes you can have. And it allowed three days, as long as a ballot was postmarked election day, there were three days until they would come in to be collected. That passed the Senate, just sitting, the one that they passed today, and this one's going to the government. The Senate passed it on the last day of the session, the House passed it. It's House Bill 2138. It has some, it's, it's very technical, but it's kind of tightening up procedures in terms of your county election officers probably know vastly more about this than me, but it sets up audit structures. It requires a chain of possession of the ballots and how you manage that. And obviously, this is a reflection of folks responding to the last election and clarifying that. One thing of interest and probably costly, every single paper ballot now is going to have to have the Secretary of State's watermark on it. So you're going to have to, somebody should corner that market because that's going to be in demand at some point. But there's a couple of other things in there. There are, there is one provision there which removes folks from the voting registry. If you have had no action with your, in voting or registering or seeking a change in four years and they send you notice and you don't respond to notice, you can be purged from the voter registration role. So that passed as well. Last thing I will note, some conversation in here about housing and those kinds of issues. Legislature spent a ton of money, I think $200 million on housing issues this year. Some of it's federal ARPA money and those kind of things. All of them, with the exception of I think some historic preservation, are all geared toward rural housing issues. I think the largest county is, has 70,000 or less. There's, so there's like extra money if you're lower than 8,000, if 20,000, you get a little less. And, but everything's geared towards rural housing because there's a real sense that in, in rural areas, folks that are trying to do economic development projects, lack housing and that's part of the incentive to bring folks into work. I know that's a lot, I apologize. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you Stuart, no need to apologize, we appreciate that, that overview and the thorough report for us to come through, especially because information is changing daily or even by the hour. I, I wanted to just point out the, the specialty courts and the competency evaluation. I'm glad you highlighted those, the specialty courts bill in particular. When I was at the Kansas Mental Health Summit a couple of weeks ago, there was a lot of conversation about that and hope that that will help really provide sort of the foundation and some infrastructure across the state for more and more judicial districts to do that. So happy to see that move forward. And I'd give, I'll give some kudos to our judicial district and Douglas County because I think that they've done a lot of support in talking with other judges across the state and courts about the benefits of that. And then I also just, I don't have any questions for you, you gave a great thorough overview. But since you mentioned the Senate Bill 493 that Governor Kelly vetoed related to counties, cities and counties regulating plastic and other containers. I just feel the need to use this platform as an opportunity to share my deep disappointment that that news happened on the, I believe in the same day or at least within the same couple of days as her choosing to sign House Bill 2717 in spite of home rule authority and in spite of, I would say, a lack of full democratic process and moved that bill forward without vetoing it and sending it back. So that was disappointing news to me because they're both really centered around home rule authority. And they were contradictory choices, but such is the way politics goes sometimes, so.
You're, you're correct to, to, to point that out. And I was attempting just to point out the things that she vetoed, but you're right, that was signed, I think, on the exact same day.
Yeah, yeah. What, Commissioner Kelly, do you have any questions or comments you want to make?
No, I just echo Commissioner Reed's disappointment in those two bills and how that went down. And, and also I, we use this space to express my disappointment and how we're making it harder for people to vote. I, I just, that disappoints me greatly. Stuart, I know you've hit on this before, but I know we have lots of people who want to know and just confirm that the money for our treatment and recovery center is still within the budget, is that correct?
Yes, the funding for the crisis center is, and I, as I understand it, we're supposed to be getting a bump because of some of the revenues. It will be at least, I think, what we've received in the last year or two.
It's exciting, you know, the focus on behavioral health is really, you know, Douglas County's been a leader in that space and it's nice to see dollars flowing that way and the number, flowing towards that area in a number of different ways. My, my only question, your report is excellent. I'm really curious about, if you could provide a little more detail, because it just seems shocking to me that a county could decide not to distribute sales taxes to the other entities who have approved that. Did I understand that correctly? And if you have any more background on that, that is fascinating to me.
The, the issue arose that, and, and I'm going to, because we've been dealing, this has been an issue in the legislature for seven years probably. In Atchison County, they passed a sales tax and it became an ongoing conflict, both professional, personal and governmental, between folks about what the, the, the sales tax was to be used for. And the county had a different conception of what the revenue would be used for than the city did. And probably most significantly, the sales tax did not have a, an end date on it. So it was, it was general and it was left without a, a date of sunset of any term. So it led to a longstanding conflict and, and some of folks, particularly the leader of tax committees, kind of picked up on this and said, you know, there are some jurisdictions where a sales tax levied would have, and, and you all, particularly your staff who live and breathe this all the time, will be able to maybe explain the dynamics more. But the, the, the basic idea that there are some sales taxes, that the distribution formula carves out a significant portion of, of the, of the revenue that's generated for entities. And it's kind of always been treated as a price you pay to, to obtain the revenue. And at some point, folks are like, you know, we've got issues that overarching those other govern, all those other jurisdictions that we need to address. And we, and I think those folks and the example of how things kind of turned sour and stayed that way in Atchison were translated into, let's add this into policy. I would note this, it was an interesting mix because the League of Municipalities obviously was very much opposed to this and the, the Kansas Association of Counties was, I think even went from neutral, I think, to being supportive of the legislation by the, by the time it, it passed.
I, I'd add too, so there's, and, and from what I understand about sales tax distribution formulas, you know, there are several options available in statute. And it's not the same from every county. And it's really sometimes hard to figure out what your distribution formula is. But like specifically, like on our behavioral health sales tax, we asked for special legislation on that and authorized the total amount would come to the county. And there are numerous examples of that in legislation. So it is kind of a strange disagreement because if you wanted to have a county-wide sales tax that's 100% goes to the county, there are ways to do that. And it was not done in this situation. And then there seems to be this longstanding disagreement about it. It's, it's an odd piece of legislation from what, and from what I understand about different pieces of it. It seems to be really tied to some issues in Atchison County. I don't know that it would change what we would do moving forward if it were to pass.
Oh, it's passed and been signed.
Okay, so like, but, I mean, I think it basically, we would still want to, we would want to be transparent with what a distribution formula was based on. I don't know that we would just rogue decide to change and keep.
No, I, I have no desire to change our distribution. It just seems fascinating to me how it would put cities and counties in conflict, really, and other taxing entities as well. I mean, and I just, it seems like the legislature could have passed something that was maybe more specific than such a general move. I, it's just curious to me, that's all.
It is a curious topic.
And you wouldn't be able to just unilaterally decide to do that. Now, this would be for any renewal or anything new going forward, so.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, that avoids some conversations.
Yeah, I did want to also just note, my understanding too is in the governor's budget is the request from OJA to add an additional district court judge for Douglas County, which should be, is big news and will require conversations later this spring and summer about our courthouse. And my understanding is that it, the governor's budget does not include funds for bids to expand for a public defender office in Douglas County.
I had a chance to chat with bids today and you may be getting a call to have.
Maybe some hope may spring eternal, so.
Yeah, well, thanks for that end note of your presentation.
So many times the news is so sad, so I'll, I'll maybe.
I take a little hope. Okay, any further questions? All right, we'll open this up for public comment. Anybody here with us that would like to make public comment about this agenda item? Okay, seeing no hands, double check online, seeing none. I'll close comment for this item, bring it back for further discussion. I just want to appreciate, the report is really thorough and I appreciate you being able to synthesize that information for us because so much goes on and so many nuanced bills that interact with each other and have varied impacts. So thanks for organizing that information for us, keeping us informed. I would certainly be paying close attention to the news these last couple of days of this week, see where the session ends.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will, do you have any appointments we'd like to discuss this evening?
No, I did just want to point out, we, that we are looking for an appointee for the Housing Authority Board. Their reappointment person did not want to be reappointed. So that's a change, should be a change on your sheet. So we are looking for an appointment there.
Okay, thank you for that update. With that, we'll move on to miscellaneous items. Sarah, you want to tell us about your memo?
Yeah, my memo is in the packet. Just want to point out, there's a, an announcement about an upcoming drug court graduation that's been added to this. So if commissioners are interested in attending drug court graduation, we want to get that on the calendar. And then some updated information regarding the potential bond sale that Douglas County, today would have been the day that we would have closed the bond sale. Based off of the results from the RFP, it was not advisable for us to continue with the sale of bonds. The rates really had just changed to the point where we would not have seen any savings from, from the rate change. So based off of the authorization the commission gave me when we moved to the private sale, we canceled the bond sale and there's an update on more information. we canceled the bond sale and there's an update on more information on what we received in the packet, if commissioners are interested there. And some great information that Douglas County was selected as one of eight jurisdictions nationwide to participate in a peer learning network, which is part of the Safety and Justice Challenge, um, and MacArthur Foundation. And so Pam's team's been working on that related to parole. And so it's exciting to be a part of that, and we're looking forward to being able to be a leader and share some of our experience in that, in that venue as well. That's all I have.
Great, thanks Sarah. How about you, Commissioner Kelly, anything you'd like to share?
I don't think so, just, um, Sarah, I don't think that last item you gave us was in our packet. Was it, was it in our memo? But maybe, that's great news, I just wanted to read more about that. Yeah. I didn't see it, but maybe. Okay.
Called SJC probation network notification. Yeah, at the very, very.
Oh, at the very end.
It's not labeled well.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, we have nothing else to share, so we are adjourned for the evening. Thanks, everybody.